...through the shops. I'm not really tired of working.
I am really tired.
And see, I just assemble anymore. I've cooked a little bit.
It's like maybe if somebody...
Am I better than audience today?
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah, you get tired. It's like school lunches, you know.
Three, 2020 Holland City Council meeting. For those people who may be joining us on television or online, we did have a closed session immediately prior to this regular meeting, so we have already called the roll. There was no official action that was taken at that closed session, but we are now in open session. And as we start our regular open meetings, we always start with an opening prayer. This evening it will be with by city attorney Ron Vanderveen, immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Ron.
Well, if you're willing, please rise and pray with me. Lord, we come before you and as news of virus, floods, fires, protests, and economic upheaval swirls around us tonight, we just pause and say thank you to you, that you love and show love for all of us, and expect us to show love and understanding to everyone as well. We ask for your grace for those who are suffering in our community with COVID-19 virus. Thank you for the dedication of the caregivers for them, and ask for your guidance in this meeting tonight as important decisions we made to affect our community. In Jesus' name, amen.
I would be pleased to be certified in the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ron. We'll now be handling our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be relatively routine, and many have been previously reviewed by council and will be enacted in one motion unless a member of the general public or a member of council asks them to be removed and placed on the regular agenda. Kathy, would you please review the consent agenda for us?
Item A, absences excused, council members Garcia and Corbin. B, approval of minutes, May 20, 2020 regular meeting and May 27, 2020 study session. C, oath of office. D, city attorney, city manager employment agreement. E, city clerk, claims filed against the city. F, fiscal services, financial auditing services. G, treasurer, placed delinquent ordinance violation invoices on summer 2020 property tax bills. H, purchasing turnout gear for fire services. I, purchasing, declare items as surplus. J, public safety services, approval of lease agreement with Grand Valley State University. K, downtown group, adopt resolution for use of sidewalks and streets downtown.
Thank you. Are there any items that a member of the public would like to have removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none. Any item that a council member would like to have removed from the consent agenda and placed onto the regular agenda?
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
I request item 4K be removed from consent.
Do we need to do a motion for that? Or just? Nope, all right. 4K. Great. Any other items? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Trithui. Support by Byrd. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Roll call on that, do we?
Roll call.
Roll call, I apologize. Could we, could you please call the roll, Kathy?
Trithui?
Yes.
Aaron Horst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters? Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And was that, it's item, it's listed as item K under the downtown group, but I'm not sure that's the correct placement on the agenda for the regular agenda? Does that get moved down into reports from boards?
It would go under management administrative services.
Management, okay.
Under 12, six.
12E, Kathy?
12E six.
12E six?
Looks like.
Thank you.
E six point five.
12E six point five, okay. I just want to make sure I've got it in the right spot on the agenda. All right. Next item is public comment. In every meeting, we do have an opportunity for the public to speak to council. Just as a reminder for those people who are here, perhaps here for public comment, this is one-way communication. You will be talking to council, but council will not be responding to questions or anything at this point in time. Also, because of COVID-19, we have set up a special email address, which is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Later in the meeting, we will be accepting those written public comments, if there are any, and I believe there may be some this evening, those into the record. But at this point, is there any member here who, any person here who would like to speak to council during public comment? Great, come on up. Just a couple of reminders, we ask that you limit your time to five minutes. There are three lights on the dais in front of me. There's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. Green light means that you're doing very well on time. Yellow light means you've got one minute left, and red light means that your time is up, and we're very strict about that. And could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name is Jeff Minkus. I live at 440 Stratford Way, apartment one in Holland, and mayor, and whoops, and council folk. I appreciate your work as always. I hope that I speak for all of us in saying that we're all mourning right now the murder of George Floyd, and we're all aware and noticing the protests that are occurring throughout our country and including here in Holland. In our effort to affirm that black lives matter and to ensure that police brutality on that scale would never happen here in Holland, the organization Campaign Zero has released eight can't wait, and those are eight policies to decrease police violence, and those have shown to decrease police violence by 72%. You can see those at eightcan'twait.org. It's the number eight, can'twait.org. Those eight policies are to ban chokeholds and strangleholds, to require de-escalation, to require a warning before shooting, to exhaust all other means before shooting, a duty for observing officers to intervene, to ban shooting at moving vehicles, to require the use of force continuum, and to require comprehensive reporting when force is used. I can't pretend to speak to know anything about our policing policies in Holland, but that's where I trust all of you and I trust Chief Messer to be able to speak to which ones of those might already be policies that we have in Holland, and which ones are not, because as city council and as mayor, that's a direct, easy action that we can take to affirm both that black lives matter and to ensure that this type of police brutality would never happen here in Holland. So again, the website is eightcan'twait, the number eight, eightcan'twait.org, and it's from Campaign Zero. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Anyone else here that would like to address council this evening? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item is item seven, Special Order of the Day, Public Hearings. Seven A, the CDBG approval of the 2020, 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan and 2020 to 2021 Annual Action Plan.
Come on up.
Mark Canales.
It's live.
Thank you.
Good to see you this evening.
Thanks. All right. So yes, items seven A, B, and C all pertain to the Community Development Block Grant. I'm gonna, my, I think what makes most sense is for me to address the first two items, seven A and B together. They fit more closely together. Maybe take a pause and perhaps complete those agenda items and then come back for item C. That's my suggestion, anyway.
Sounds good.
So again, I'll start with just a very brief overview, and for those that were here, a week ago, I went over this slide. I amended it a bit, but just a reminder that the CDBG grant, Community Development Block Grant, has been in existence since the mid-'70s. Holland has been a recipient since the late '80s, and its primary objective is to help entitlement communities develop viable urban communities. And it does that through focusing on three national objectives, decent housing, suitable living environments, which they kind of define as the condition of neighborhoods and expanded economic opportunities. And all that happens under the umbrella of the Community Development Block Grant needs to principally benefit persons of low to moderate income. And for HUD, that's defined as persons, households with incomes below 80% of the area median. And then lastly, citizen participation is sort of a central component to CDBG, which just means that at several stages in the process of planning and the use of the funds and reporting out on the funds that we're obligated to obtain, citizen comment, public input. All right. So sub, item seven A is an annual event where somebody from Community Neighborhood Services comes to you and requests that our annual plan for how we're going to spend the next year's allotment of funds will be allocated and spent. This year, once every five years, we also come to you with requests to approve a five-year plan. And so a five-year plan is a process of looking at a lot of data, market analysis data, housing needs data, poverty data, homelessness information, and then coming up with a strategic plan and a list of priorities for how the community would like to move forward over the next five years to address what they consider to be core concerns. So the slide that's before you is a summary of the strategic plan such that what are, how we intend to use the roughly 1.55 million in additional funds that we anticipate receiving over the next five years. I think I might have used the word status quo last week. It's essentially a status quo plan where we continue providing a lot of the core services, or the core services that we provided in the past, namely the home repair program, and then coupled with that, the home energy retrofit program. Dropping down one other line there, the public improvements. We've historically put some money into sidewalks, street trees, park improvements, those sorts of things. We've historically supported a youth employment and training program. We've historically supported the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan to provide some direct services within our immediate area, and then program administration. The two items that perhaps are a bit new in this particular plan, not entirely new, but the affordable housing development, that was in not the last five-year plan, but it was in amended, it was in an amended plan roughly two years ago, and I can perhaps say more about that if there are questions about that. And then that item above, Fair Housing, housing homelessness and food assistance, that is a new item, although again, not entirely new. Going back quite a few years, the city did allocate more of its CDBG funds towards sort of public services, social service sorts of activities. Some of that was blended with general city funds, but some of it was CDBG funds. When the CDBG grant was reduced and the city budget got tighter, those funds were not entirely, but largely eliminated. So we're trying to just build back in a little bit more support for social services that we consider to be essential in the city. So that's kind of a summary of the five-year plan. The next slide looks very similar. It's basically the same budget categories but split out, or as they would be allocated over the next 12-month period, starting on July 1. We do know that the five-year plan is a bit of an estimate. We do know a solid number for our next one-year allocation, and that's 325,459. And I think, as I mentioned last week, it's not a strict one-fifth division of the five-year plan. We look at what we think we see coming up in the next year, and we kind of try to plan accordingly. But some or several of the items are allocated very evenly across the five-year period. I think just unless, yeah, why don't we just quickly introduce item seven B as well, which is an amendment to the annual action plan that we're in the midst of right now, the 2019-2020 plan. And in that plan, there was a kind of a two-part goal to support other affordable housing measures, one being an affordable housing development that is still in process but did not come to fruition during this fiscal year. So we anticipate supporting that out of our next fiscal year, but we weren't, we were not able to support that in this current year. And the other one was an intention of restarting a program that the city has funded in the past under a different funding source that would help landlords rehabilitate their rental units in exchange for a period of guaranteed rental affordability in those units. And for reasons that I note in the second paragraph, we just were not, we did not complete that goal somewhat intentionally, somewhat because time was getting tight, but I think the main reason was more intentional in the sense that we didn't feel there was a clear need for the way that it was designed in the past. I surveyed a couple of communities in Michigan. They were finding that program to be very lightly utilized, and I did a bit of a survey of local property owners and was getting a very tepid sort of level of interest in making use of that program. So it's not off the table entirely, but we did not complete it this year, and the recommendation from our HUD representative is if you've not completed a particular goal, it's best to amend your plan and get it off your plan so that you're not held to those objectives. So I will pause there, and if there are questions for me or...
Yep, any questions for Mark? Great, well then let's open up the public hearing on item seven A, approval of the 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan and the 2020 to 2021 Annual Action Plan. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak in regard to item seven A only at this point? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on item seven A, and what is the pleasure of council?
Motion to adopt.
Moved by Trithui. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Hookstra. Any discussion?
No, maybe the public should know that we did discuss this at length in a study session. It's not just like we look at it and say it's fine.
Yeah, you're correct. We did talk to this, talked about this subject at some length at last week's study session. Yes, Lynn?
Yeah, I just wanted to note again that I was, I'm glad to see that there's funding again for social services in the CDBG budget this year, and we have a new understanding of essential services. So I appreciate the language that those housing homelessness and food assistance are really essential to our community.
Anyone else? All right. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Aaron Horst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters?
Trithui?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to item seven B, CDBG approval of the 2019 to 2020 Annual Action Plan Amendment. Now open this for public, open the public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak in regard to item seven Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item seven B?
Will we adopt the recommendation?
Moved by Hookstra.
Support.
Oh.
Is there, I'm gonna give that one to Aaron Horst. Support by Aaron Horst. Any discussion from council? All right, seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Trithui?
Yes.
Aaron Horst?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now we're on to item seven C, CDBG approval of the 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan Amendment regarding COVID-19. Mark, back with us.
Thanks again. So now this is an entirely, rather new topic and an unusual opportunity. I believe it was in the, in 2009, the city did also receive a CDBG substant, or additional allocation during that time in response to the economic crisis of the recession. So I hope it's not a 10-year occurrence that we need to do these supplemental allocations for these sorts of reasons. But if you're familiar with the CARES Act, which passed Congress and was signed by the president either late March, early April, included in that fairly large bill was an additional $5 billion allocated to the Community Development Block Grant Program, and the city is receiving, or in the process of receiving, the first of likely two allocations of those funds strictly for the purpose of addressing the COVID-19 response. So our first allocation of, again, of possibly two, with the second amount not being known yet, but the first amount is $191,446. And, you know, we, for, I think fairly obvious reasons, we wanted to go through a fairly expedited process of figuring out where those funds could best be used in the community. That was clearly their, HUD's intention, and where the need seemed to suggest that we act. So our goal in looking at the need for those funds was to look at where are there gaps in the community's immediate response to both the healthcare side, the public health side, as well as the economic effect side of where the virus was impacting households in the city. And again, utilizing a variety of kind of sources from the community, we kind of quickly landed on inviting requests or applications from three organizations. Four technically, but one decided to not pursue the invitation. And those three represented agencies that are meeting needs in the area of housing and shelter and food assistance. So we, again, I solicited and invited those three entities to submit an application, and those came in, and based on that, we had some internal, a couple of internal meetings with staff and determined allocations that you see in front of you. So that's essentially the recommendation tonight, is to approve that plan. What we're actually doing is we're amending that same 1920 plan that we've already just amended a few moments ago, but that, again, for technical reasons, that's just sort of HUD's way of doing things. I'll just say just a bit more about why we honed in on these three organizations. I trust that most of us are, you know, relatively familiar with these three organizations. Good Samaritan Ministries, in the initial weeks of the crisis, could establish that over 40% of the calls they were receiving for housing assistance were directly tied to the needs directly affiliated, or, you know, directly connected to the COVID issue. Resilience, which provides emergency shelter for persons experiencing domestic violence. They saw an uptick in need, and they anticipate further uptick in need, and they could confirm that between 35 to 40% of the families that they serve are residents of the city of Holland. And then likewise, Community Action House saw a fourfold increase in need going back to looking at March of 2019. Fortunately, I guess that has flattened a little bit, but the need is still very high based on historical, or historical levels. So, and they too serve, they serve a broader region, but they established that over 40% of their immediate clientele come from the city of Holland. So our goal is to get these funds to them as quickly as possible. One of the unique things about this particular grant is that HUD is allowing, however we determine to use these funds, to allow them to be, cover costs that were, that are retroactive to perhaps early March. They didn't even define a date. They said you can go retroactive if you're experiencing costs. We can incur those costs prior to even the formal grant agreement, which is quite rare. I think that's my last slide, other than, yeah, there might be a repeat, just in case there are questions around where there are eligible activities, but why don't I pause there again and see if there are any questions about this particular request?
Yep, any questions for Mark? All right. Great, I think you're, you did such a great job, Mark, that we don't have any, this weekend, last week, we don't have any additional questions. Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you all very much.
I will now open up the public hearing in regard to item seven C, the CDBG approval of the 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan Amendment in regard to COVID-19. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak during the public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and what is the pleasure of council in regard to item seven C?
Motion to adopt the recommendation.
Moved by Trithui. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond. Any discussion?
Just one thing.
Yes, Mr. Trithui.
The only thing I want to say, and we talked about it last week, one of the questions that came up is, and staff addressed this, and as much money as possible is going from everything that's going out here, every, every, let me try this again. As much money as possible is going to the programs up to and including waiving some of the administration fees, trying to make as much money available to the programs that have requested it. They got very creative, which I am very thankful for, and this is just making sure that we're all working together, making sure that the money goes where it belongs. So thank you very much, Mark and staff, that put this together.
Great, yes, thank you. And any other comments from council in regard to the motion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Trithui?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to item nine, Written Petitions and Communications. Item nine E, email comments that came in through our email address specifically for public comment, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. And Kathy, were there comments that were received this week?
There was one from Mika Weiss regarding analysis of policies.
All right, thank you very much, and that is made part of the packet so that all the council members will be able to see that. Next item, item 12E six one, six point one, gifts.
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts. Downtown Group, Downtown Development Authority, Rest Haven, $1,490. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Thank you, and what is the pleasure of council?
Motion to accept with appreciation.
I don't know.
You've been how to practice.
I guess so.
I'm waiting, yeah, for...
Moved by Trithui. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Byrd. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none.
Very enthusiastic.
A very, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Tradition gets in the way, I think, a little bit every now and then. Item 12E six point three, Human Resources, Approval of Collective Bargaining Agreement Between City and Police Officers Labor Council.
Yes, and if I could just give a brief introduction to both this item and the one following, first with the Police Officers Labor Council and then with the Professional Firefighters Union. This is the result of very fantastic work led by our Public Safety Director, Matt Messer, and our Human Resources Director, Jennifer Orm. And we could talk about just the actual process by which we were able to secure these agreements with our unions, and as I always talk to my, our union groups, I talk, I remind them that I think of them as employees first and union members second, not in a bad way, but in a positive way, because we worked very hard to create a culture where we have trusted employees and that we build that culture of trust between the employees and with administration and with council. And this, these two items that we're gonna bring forward to you tonight, I think, speak to the culture that's been able to be built. but reflects great on these employees that we have. So, with that, I'm going to give the pleasure to, it looks like Jen is going to come up and talk more specifically about the Police Officers' Labor Council Agreement. And, hey, look at this, we got Matt on the other side, so.
Not the dual pianos, it's the dual mics.
Yes.
Will you sing?
No, Tim will have to sing for me. I cannot sing, would not be good. So, I just want to piggyback off real quick. I know what the City Manager's has said, and I'll turn it over to Jen as far as the nuts and bolts of the contract. But, for me, from a historical perspective, I've been involved with contract negotiations since the late 90s. And this contract went very, very smoothly, much more smooth than in the past. Both sides were definitely being able to compromise, cooperation, there was trust, and it went very, very quickly this year. We're used to meeting several, several times over a long period of time. We normally start around the first of the year, and, you know, we meet, I don't know, every couple of weeks probably. It takes a long time to get through these negotiations. This one worked a lot differently, it was a lot smoother, definitely a lot more flexibility, a lot more agreeability with the unions. Our City Manager did a great job stepping in early, and I think this was his first contract negotiation here at Holland. And I think the stage was set very early on that he wanted us to start closer together. We're used to starting at far ends of the spectrum. He wanted us to kind of start in the middle. And he supported staff, and he looked at human capital and staffing to be very, very important. And I think with that and all the other prior meetings with the Human Resources Director and our City Manager, the relationships have been, had been built prior to that, and they continue to be built. So, based on that and some prior things, these negotiations went very quickly, very well. I don't think we met more than, I don't know, maybe three or four times, a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails back and forth. And from a historical perspective, I don't recall ever, there may be a time, but when both contracts were settled, signed, ratified, agreed upon prior to July 1, that's, if it did occur, it's extremely rare. And it appears that's going to happen. And you can't see it, but I'm smiling behind my mask because that's a feat, and it's never happened before that I can recall. So, great job. And like we said earlier, we talked about, I think Jen has done an outstanding job. This contract was really, she stepped in and took over and really was the main person negotiating this contract with the union. And it went very, very well, you know. Maybe I should have stayed out of it more often. But, very, very well. And as far as the contracts themselves, I think they're a great contract for the city and for the union. I think it's kind of a win-win. There's no really increases in retirement healthcare subsidies, there's no regular healthcare cost increases, there's no increases in the normal cost, I know Tim's sitting over there listening, "normal costs," it's Tim, as far as the retirement. So, I think it's a good contract for both sides. And with that, unless there are any other questions, I'll turn it over to Jen to go over the specifics.
Yeah. It truly is a team effort, and the union and the negotiating team for the city, we really worked together, and I'm really proud of the end result. And I think the union's very pleased with it as well. Yeah, so, it's not a real exciting contract because there aren't any huge items. There's a lot of housekeeping, there's some language cleanup, there's some clarification, there's a few things that were modified, adjusted, you'll see that in your packet. But, yeah, so with the police agreement, there are only 12 items, but really half of them were just that, housekeeping or kind of maintenance with the contract language. And, yeah, to have this settled and have an agreement, I know it was actually before COVID-19 that things were really wrapping up. So, talking to other municipalities and other HR directors, they've had to halt their negotiation process. We didn't have to, because we had made so much progress between January and really March, that at that point, it was just kind of some minor tweaks and a couple of phone calls and maybe some text messages, but we got there very quickly. So, I'm hoping that this will really set the tone for our future negotiations and our processes. As things come up, you know, the union can bring it to us, we can discuss it, get it on our radar before we sit down at the negotiation table. And I think that that's one of the reasons that this went so smoothly, is because we have those relationships established and that trust. So, if you look at your, if you look at your attachments, there is the resolution, and so that's what we're asking you tonight to approve, and then also the actual CBA settlement agreement. Some of the big changes, the duration of the actual agreement is going to a three-year, we've had four-year contracts, at least for this past contract. But you'll look at things like modification to standby pay, modification to the court services language, we've got some other tweaks to some of the FMLA and the way that people are able to use their time off, their paid time off, whether it be sick, bereavement, a couple of items there, some equipment reimbursement, not adding any dollars to that, but just adding some new equipment that's necessary so that they can do their jobs effectively. And then really just the wage adjustments for the course of this three-year contract, and then, again, some kennel construction and whatnot. So, it's really pretty minor, but we're very pleased, and it's a win-win for both the city and the union. So, that's the police contract, so we'll stop there, pause. Any questions?
Any questions from counsel? We've gone through this pretty extensively over the last couple of weeks.
Yes.
All right. Great. What is the pleasure of counsel?
Motion to adopt the recommendation for the collective bargaining agreement between the Police Officers' Labor Council of Michigan Holland Police Officers' Association and the City of Holland.
Moved by Trethuie, is there support?
Support.
Support by Byrd, any discussion? Yes, Mr. Hookstra.
Just a note of thanks to both Jen and Matt and the whole team. As you said, it's a team effort to bring this to a quick conclusion. And I guess I've been around long enough to remember some of those negotiations, too, that we're not as friendly as this. And also, having been a part of a couple of unions in my time, usually those relationships are contentious and adversarial, and it's very difficult to foster mutual respect in those kind of situations. But, also, I think in no small part, Keith, to your sort of inter, not intervention, but presence initially to set the tone, it was huge also, I think. So, you know, when you, in my view, this is what union relationships should be like, rather than that contentiousness. So, everybody's needs and benefits or requirements are met to everybody's benefit. So, a good job to everybody for your work.
Thank you.
Hope it continues, just like this.
Any other comments from counsel? I just wanted to echo Dave, what you had said, and this is my first go-round in this. You guys have set a very high bar. So, we have, we have big expectations, not only, not only staff here, but with the union as well. And the idea that one of the most important things, if not the most important thing that we have here in the City of Holland, is our human capital and making sure that the people that work for the City of Holland are well compensated, that they feel like they are taken care of, they feel like they are part of this community. And I think that you've done a great job in sending that message here, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, Kathy, will you please call the roll?
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Trethuie?
Yes.
Aaron Horst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 12E 6.4, Human Resources, Approval of the Collective Bargaining Agreement Between the City and the Professional Firefighters' Union.
Yes, so, much of the same, do you want to?
I just want to say something real quick, and I don't know if I hit this, hit on this earlier on, but this is a two-way street, it takes both sides to meet in the middle. So, I just wanted to kind of acknowledge that both of the unions were very flexible, very agreeable. They're coming in on their days off, they're helping out, they're responding to emails, they were very, very flexible in this whole situation. And I just wanted to just publicly thank them for working with us so well. And I think I said that before, I just want to make sure that I got that out there. It's just a, it takes two sides to meet in the middle, and they were willing to do that. So, I just wanted to put that out there. Thanks.
Definitely. Okay, so, the fire union, firefighters' union, a lot of the same items, if you look at your packet, there's some redundancy from what you saw with the police officers' contract, with a few minor differences. But some of those differences are getting us closer to equity between the unions, but also with the non-union employees. So, things like the holidays, adding Christmas Eve, that was, they only had seven holidays versus everyone else having eight. So, things that do create that consistency, which we like to see, and that's kind of our goal. So, again, same things with modifying some of the language around the sick leave, comp time, the food allowances specific to the fire group, wages, same as what were agreed upon with the police officers. There is a small adjustment with the tuition reimbursement program, and then also bereavement to make that more similar with the non-union employees, both for the police and fire group. And then, yeah, the duration. So, we looked at, again, going to a three-year contract for this time around. So, that really kind of sums it up. Any questions about that settlement agreement or resolution?
Questions from counsel? Great. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to Item 12E 6.4?
Motion to adopt the resolution of the collective bargaining agreement between the Professional Firefighters' Union, IAFF, Local 759, in the City of Holland.
Moved by Trethuie, is there support?
Support.
Support by Aaron Horst, any discussion? Yes, Mr. Byrd?
Got to mint my mouth. Like you said, we've spoken about this quite a bit. The work that goes in behind closed doors, people don't get to see that, they get to see the fruit of all the labor. I dare to say that there wasn't a lot of work put into this. But there was a lot of, I won't say a lot of work, there wasn't a lot of strenuous work put into this. And that's because of some key players that we have, and these three individuals here have played a huge role in that. And I want to say thank you, commend you for the work that you've done. As I said last time we spoke about this, I applaud you guys for doing that. I've been on for a little while, and we have always gotten close to arbitration, and it's always knocking at the door. It's beyond and never meeting in the middle, sort of say, without the threat of arbitration. So, to have two contracts without a lot of ups and downs in it, and to meet before the deadline, from what I'm hearing and from what I've seen, that's unheard of. And that right there is setting the bar really high, and I have no doubt with leadership that we have in place with counsel and with the leaders in the city, you guys, this will continue to happen. So, I want to say thank you again for the work that you put in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from counsel? Yes, Mr. Trethuie.
I was going to hold my comments to wrap both of them into one here. First of all, I want to just reiterate what I've been saying for years, that I am extremely proud of the employees of the City of Holland. This is part and parcel of something I felt, something I've been part of for a great number of years. The employees of the city have a pulse of the city. We may have some differences every now and then, that's life. The nine of us have differences up here, that's life. I'm not going to repeat a bunch of things that have been said already, I wholeheartedly agree with them. It's a give-and-take situation, I've been part of those negotiations in my previous You guys make it look easy. The mayor has said that a couple of times, because this is his first round. I guarantee you, it is not easy, no matter how much it looks like it's coming to you right now. But, because of the groundwork that was let out there, because of the communications with the employees that we have, because of the trust that the employees have in management and management has in their, in the employees, and counsel has in everybody, and I don't talk for counsel very often, but I'm going to in this case, that's what helps put this together. It's the communication, the trust, and the pulse of the city. It's been said a number of times, congratulations to all of you on both sides of the aisle, all three different departments or all three different areas that were here. Again, personally, I am extremely proud to represent the employees of the City of Holland to the citizens of the City of Holland. Keep up the great work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments from counsel? Great. Thank you. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Peters?
Yes.
Trethuie?
Yes.
Aaron Horst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I was, I chided Councilman Trethuie a few moments ago about not making a motion when he thought we were just going to make a motion, and the reason why that was delayed was he was checking my work and making sure that we were following all of the appropriate rules here, and he had noticed that I had neglected to call for a vote to accept the communications that we have received from members of the general public. So, I need to go back to Item 9A, Email Comments, and entertain a motion to accept those comments into the record.
So moved.
Moved by Byrd, is there support?
Support.
Support by Hookstra, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Mr. Trethuie earns his salary tonight as Chief Governance Officer, so thank you. I appreciate that for making sure the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. Next item is communications from the City Manager, I believe.
Actually, we're dropping in 6.5, the downtown.
There we go. See, that's why we have you guys here. 6.5, 12E 6.5, correct. This came off of the, this is the item that came off of the consent agenda.
And I'm going to have Assistant City Manager, Matt Van Dyken, who, one of his areas of responsibility is the downtown group, and he's done great work on this item. So, he'll present and then answer any questions you might have.
Great. Welcome in.
Good evening. Thank you. The item that we are recommending that you adopt tonight is to allow some of our downtown merchants and restaurants to operate some parts of their operations in the sidewalk and in some of the parking spaces. We had talked about this with the, both the DDA Board and the PSD Board. So, about a month ago, in a joint meeting on Zoom, we can't wait back till we get back to regular meetings, they unanimously voted to allow this. This is something that we have done in the past when we do our sidewalk sales, through kind of an administrative process. But as we talk through it, you know, there's, what is temporary? So, we're looking at extending this out to September 7, after talking to Ron a little bit more and looking at some of the emergency regulations by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, we think that you adopting the resolution makes a lot of sense. I will just say that, I mentioned this goes to September 7, safety is our top priority with this, we want to make sure these outdoor retailers are operating in the safest manner possible. And to date, we have had four retailers and three restaurants now officially apply. We think we'll have a fourth one, but we haven't seen that application yet. This is becoming very common among communities that have vibrant downtowns. A lot of the towns up and down the west side of the state are adopting similar regulations. With that, that's all about all I had, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from council members?
Yes, I do.
Yes, Mr. Hookstra.
Since I'm the one who took this off consent, I did it for two reasons. First of all, to give a little bit of light to this for people who are interested in what's going on downtown. The other is, when I first heard of this, there was, there were a couple of hairs that raised on the back of my neck. that raised on the back of my neck, thinking about how this is going to roll out and what it'll look like in real time. I recall what it looks like downtown when we have sidewalk sales or other things that take place within the street. And I'm assuming that, from what I'm reading here, that that's a possibility or the resolution allows using part of the street for that kind of activity. So I guess one of the questions I have, also reading that whoever, whatever merchants choose to avail themselves of that space needs to run it by the police department. And there's a little bit of, to my mind, ambiguous stipulations about what sort of safety measures will be taking place there. So it would ease my mind a little bit if someone could elaborate on what those safety measures look like. Because I, you know, sidewalk sales, you're looking at bargain stuff. You're not worried, thinking about a car going to come and, you know, hit you and stuff like that. And you just get caught up in that. So it's a, that's a sticking point for me that I could really use help in some.
Sure. So partially because of what the Michigan Liquor Control Commission does is, that drives a portion of this, but safety drives it from our end. If you think of the, like the sidewalk cafes at Alpenrose, at the Sidewalk Cafe in front of New Holland Brewing Company, when we allow these, these are going to have a very similar feel to that. So there's not going to be the ability for someone to just wander from where they're eating and wander into 8th Street. They will be delineated. Actually, if you go down there right now, there are some folks that are getting set up already. And you can see how they look. I actually ran through there at lunch at noon today. And there is still plenty of sidewalk space that's left from where these are. And there's also a very clear delineation of where the tables can and cannot be. So it's not going to be people that have the ability to just wander out into traffic. That's just not going to happen. You know, really, I want people to really understand the importance of, you say, why would we do this? Why would you recommend that the city council adopt this resolution? Well, remember that when our restaurants, who've now been closed down for dining for the past three months, get to go back to work, they're only going to be allowed to go back at 50% capacity of their inside. So this is really an effort, especially for the restaurants, to get additional seating that's in a safe place outside of what the envelope that they can operate in. You can imagine, I think if my salary was cut in half, that would be devastating for me and my family. So this is really an effort to allow those restaurants and retailers to have a better option, to have more tables, to seat more people safely so that their incomes can continue to rise up. So, but I, again, rest assured, and maybe if you have a chance to drive through there, there will be delineation. The Liquor Control Commission requires delineation. We require delineation to keep people from doing exactly what you're saying. So that they're entering and exiting these locations from off of the sidewalk side and are not going and wandering out into the, into traffic.
Well, thank you. I guess a word to the wise, to those who come and participate, just be careful. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Trithuie?
Thank you for taking this off, Dave. I'm going to revoice my opinion about closing the street off. I'm not worried about people walking out. I'm worried about cars coming in. Unless we have the cement barriers or the blue traffic stop devices that we have down by the civic center, the little gates that are there if a car, if some, something happens, and yes, I'm chicken a little looking for the world to fall apart here. But if somebody got hurt because of a wayward vehicle being that close, being put, especially if they're going to be using the parking spaces. Sidewalks, we've got a proven. Parking spaces, we don't, not with traffic going down there. I have a concern about that. And I will, I'll tell you right now, I will be voting no on this consistently because of alcohol and public property. I will not waive from that.
So there's my concerns, and I know you addressed them.
I have not seen anything here, Matt, that tells me that there's going to be anything other than an iron gate out there. That's not going to stop a car if people are sitting in those parking spots.
So I don't want to argue with you, Mike, at all. I will just state that where these locations are going, they're the same distance from the roadway that the existing downtown outdoor cafes are.
Okay. If that's the case, then maybe my concerns are going to be alleviated. And I will physically go down there and take a look at what your layout is.
Great.
But I still reserve the right to have that concern.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments from council?
I just want to, just a point of clarification for those folks that are listening, because I get a lot of emails and calls about this and have been over the last several weeks. The decision to open up the sidewalk space and the parking space was what was requested by the downtown merchants and the downtown restaurants?
Yes. So the Principal Shopping District Board and the Downtown Development Authority Board, both voting unanimously to do this.
Yeah. And for those folks out there that don't know what the makeup of the PSD and the DDA are, but those are downtown merchants and downtown restaurants, right? The folks that are most directly affected by this. Sorry, I'm using my cross-examination tools from my lawyer trade.
It feels like it a little bit sometimes.
Yeah, sorry about that. Sorry about that. And then the other question is that they were the ones who made the decision that they requested that we do it with the sidewalks and the parking lots. But they were also the ones that said, we'd rather not close down the street. Because I've gotten a lot of people who are asking that question, why not close down the street? And it's really, it's been the merchants and the restaurants that have been the ones that have been behind that decision, correct?
It really, it is. I'm glad you brought that up. So I sit on both the PSD and the DDA boards as well. And the tenor of the boards was to, let's wait and see if that's something that needs to happen. Because what we don't want to do is do more harm than good by closing the streets. Because so many of our downtown retailers and restaurants now are getting curbside and providing curbside service that they never did before. And may actually, that may become a bigger portion of their business. So that decision, if warranted, that could come back to the city council. But at this point, that's not a recommendation from either one of the boards.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear to folks that the driving force behind the decisions, the city was being accommodating for what the merchants and the restaurants were looking toward doing themselves.
Correct.
Great. Excellent. Any other questions from council?
No, and I believe that in one of these discussions that some of the handicap entrances are on the street side too. So you don't want to close off those when the cars come in. That would facilitate their participation.
Great. Any other questions from council? What is the pleasure of council in regard to this matter?
Move, we adopt the resolution.
Moved by Hookstra, is there support?
Support. Oh, anybody else? Go ahead, Jay.
Support. Support by Peters. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll on this one?
Trithuie?
You got to start with me. No.
Aaron's Horse?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters? Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now, if I'm correct in reading the agenda, I believe we are on communications from the city manager.
Yes, and I do have a handful of things tonight. And I will try to go quickly, but also cover the information first. As you might suspect, and if there's inner wondering sometimes, like if we have inside information at City Hall or with other connections, no, we don't. We were somewhat taken by surprise again by a most recent executive order. But we are really looking forward to being able to reopen City Hall, although in a modified way. On Monday, June 8, we were moving in this direction anyway. But as we take a look at the executive order and the various things that it has, and certainly we've seen an uptick in our residents again, asking for some of those services that we understandably were not getting requests for. We're very busy and we're looking forward to, on a limited basis, be able to open again to the public. When I say limited, we will reopen along with suggested guidelines the way we most recently had closed, which is that in the lobby of City Hall is where we will greet those that come and visit us. And we will either take care of them with customer service representatives at that point or we will have employees from the building come down and meet with visitors at that point. So we still have reduced staff and we certainly still are following the order and allowing employees to do portions of their work remotely as they can. But again, we certainly have entire departments and we certainly have other employees that are not able to do all or in some cases, any of their work remotely. We have continued to handle emails and phones and websites. And we continue to encourage the public to use those methods. Quite frankly, I think that will be a positive outcome of the coronavirus and the COVID. And sometimes it feels like there's not a lot of them that come out of this. But I think it made us even better and hopefully made more of our citizens comfortable with accessing services that way. So again, just to let the public know that we will be reopening. And if you do come to City Hall, we ask that you wear a mask when entering and while you're in the building. Additionally, I wanted to let the community know on behalf of the Ottawa County Health Department that there is free COVID testing occurring this weekend. And in particular, and I want to make sure that I get this right, this is from the Health Department, that the 49424 ZIP code and specifically the location, the West Ottawa High School South Campus, was chosen because that is a particular ZIP code that showed the most disproportionately affected population, particularly in the Hispanic and the Latinx population that was affected and is being affected by the coronavirus, COVID-19. So that went into some of the thinking of picking this location. And the dates, I think this is being widely advertised, but on Saturday, June 6, from 8:30 to 3:30. And Sunday, June 7, from 11 to 5. And we certainly would encourage those that want to take advantage of that free testing. It's not antibody testing, it's testing for the COVID-19 virus itself. So certainly wanted to take this opportunity, just one more way to publicize that and make that known. I'd also like to personally and also on behalf of the city just say a thank you to our community. And by extension, but secondarily also to particularly our police department. As being someone that grew up in this community, left, came back, and now not only lives here, but is honored to serve this community. It was really amazing to see and be part of the community response this weekend and the organization that came together in so many wonderful ways and peacefully to protest in a way that so many communities have not been able to peacefully do. All in opposition to the brutality that most recently was seen in Minneapolis. I'm very proud to serve with the employees of this organization, with all of you and the stances that you've taken in this. But also really representing the community that stepped up, I think, in this weekend. And particularly was proud also to be part of and see the responses that were distributed by both Chief Messer and Mayor Box on behalf of us all. So thank you. And then finally, just in a much more minor way, just thank you for the trust that you as council put in me in approving the contract and in particular, the five-year extension of that. Just, I take it as a high honor to serve each of you, but also and more importantly, the larger community. And any success that we have, I fully attribute to you and to the staff and to the community that I'm able to work with. So thank you.
That's it? All right. Great. Thank you, Keith. I have a couple of things to comment on as well. First of all, on Monday night, myself, a few members of the city council and some members of city staff had the opportunity to volunteer at the Holland High School commencement services that took place at the civic center. This has been a year of doing things differently and finding ways to make lemonade out of lemons. And I believe that the commencement ceremonies that took place at the civic center on Monday night were definitely a great example of that. They looked at ways to be able to do it differently. And I think it worked out very, very well for everyone that was involved. It was a joy to see the students walk, be able to walk across the stage, to see three giant screens with their smiling faces on them and their parents having the opportunity to be able to participate by being in their vehicles as well. Holland obviously is just one of the many local area high schools that have been trying to find different ways to be able to do this. And I wanted to say, hey, congratulations to Holland High. Congratulations to all of our graduates. You will have the opportunity to say, we did it differently than everyone else did. And we took those challenges and we tried to find opportunities in them. So congratulations to all of the graduates. And thank you for allowing us to participate as part of that process at Holland High. And as was mentioned before, we have some new things happening downtown. And as part of that new executive order, you are now able, or starting, I believe, tomorrow morning, going to be able to shop at our Holland merchants without an appointment. You can actually just go in whenever you want to. If you want to get a jumpstart on that or if you want to still do your shopping online, remember we do have the website, shoptdowntownholland.com. Take a look there, go in, find the shops. I know that my wife in particular is actually interested in being able to try on a few things before she purchases them. You can now do those things and that's a very exciting opportunity. And starting on Monday, our downtown and all Holland restaurants will be allowed, be open to do in-house dining. As we were discussing, we've got the opportunity to do a little more outside. But they will be able to do it inside as well. And again, we want to encourage folks to not only dine inside the restaurants in Holland, but we do have the dine downtownholland.com website if you want to do online ordering. And it is slick. It works really, really well. We also want to mention, COVID-19 has had a big impact on a lot of different organizations and a lot of different businesses and all of us personally. But we have a history and traditions in this community that we as a community need to make sure we do not let die. And one of those is Tulip Time. Anyone who has been following the news this past week, Tulip Time had a press conference and announced that if they're not able to raise a very significant amount of money, we may not see Tulip Time coming back again. There is a misconception in the community that the city runs Tulip Time and the city funds Tulip Time. That is not the case. We plant thousands and thousands of tulips here in the City of Holland. We pay, we purchase many, many tulip bulbs, the City of Holland. But the festival itself is run by a separate nonprofit organization. And if they do not get financial support, they will not be here next year. And it is up to us as the Holland community to make sure that that tradition continues. They have a GoFundMe page. It is charity.gofundme.com.tuliptime. And I encourage every member of the Holland community, if we all contribute a little bit, we can get that festival back again next year and for another 90 years to come. Also, probably the most important thing that I wanted to discuss this week has been brought up twice already, once in the public comment period, once again by the city manager. This is, these past 10 days have been tumultuous in the world. We were already dealing with a pandemic. We were already dealing with an economic crisis. And then the tragic death of George Floyd occurred in Minneapolis. That was followed by demonstrations and destruction around the country and in nearby communities. But I am very proud to say that things were different here in Holland, Michigan. Over the weekend, we had two separate peaceful demonstrations. As long as I've been sitting here, which is not that long, but as long as I've been sitting here, I have always encouraged public comment and public participation in the process. And one of the things that I see with those demonstrations was public participation and public comment in our community process. I believe as public servants, we can only make good decisions if we know what our community is thinking, what our community is feeling, and what our community wants and needs from us. But I also believe that it's not just what you say, it's how you say it. And it's not just what you do, it's how you do it. Holland, I want to thank you for what you said this weekend, but also how you said it. And I want to thank you for what you did, but more importantly, how you did it. I want to tell you that as a mayor and from what I know of this city council, we are listening and we hear you. And I think the best way that we can prove that to you is And I think the, the best way that we can prove that to you is not only one of our top priorities, but our top priority out of our priority setting meeting in January was diversity, equity and inclusion. We feel that that is very important. I know for one, I'm, I will say it over and over again, black lives matter. The people of this community need representation here and I believe that they have it. We are dedicated to making Holland a welcoming community for all. If you've been watching this entire, this entire meeting or listening, you've heard a lot of words repeated over and over again tonight. Trust, respect, hard work, dedication, building firm foundations. That's what this community is about. And I think that that was reflected this weekend on all sides. I'm going to tell you, I do not have all of the answers, but I want to listen, I want to learn, I want to engage and I want to act. Because I want to make sure that Holland is a place that celebrates the value of everyone who calls this place home. Communications from council members.
Wow. After that?
Mr. Trethuie.
I really don't want to, but I've got to. Very, very nicely said, Mr. Merrick. Appreciate that. The city manager took a little bit of my thunder away. I just wanted to comment on the fact that yes, we do have a contract signed. And it's the human capital, I think, that is through the review process, through the negotiation. It was the value, the leadership, the... How do I put this nicely? The way, the reasons you were hired, you have been following through on. We heard that during the hiring process. We had questions for you. You had questions for us. We had questions from the community. You have been following right along and it is a pleasure to be able to offer that contract and glad that it's been signed and approved. We looked for a long lasting relationship. We will hold your feet to the fire. There's no two ways about that and you don't expect anything less. And we don't expect anything less. We have a, we talked about a high bar to be set. You set the bar. And that bar will continue to rise. So, thank you very much. Congratulations. And personally, I look forward to working with you for the very long-term future. Thank you, Keith.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Byrd.
Freddie Gray, Tamir Rice, Dominique White, Anthony Hill, Terrence Crutcher, Aaron Bailey, Beatty Jones, Alonzo Smith, Contino Legrier, Joseph Mann, Bothin Jean, Eric Harris, Eric Garner, Toy Robinson, Laquan McDaniel, Isel Ford, Michael Ramos, Demarcus Seamer, Trevon Martin, Christian Taylor, George Floyd. These names that I've just read off are just a, a few names of black men who have been killed by police officers, officers in our, in our country. This is by no means a exhaustive list. There are more names, but these are just some that I wanted to put down on paper and just speak those out. As a black man, seeing these things, it, every time, it affects me. Every time, there's an emotional connection and I have a son who's 25 years old, 24 or 25, 24, we'll say 24. That makes me look younger. And I think of him. I think of my son and the parent that gets that call or the wife, girlfriend, mother, dad, son, daughter, to get that call. And not just get that call, but to see in some situations, the last few minutes, few breaths that are breathed by their loved one. And watching this last video of George Floyd, it was, it was very emotional for me. And to hear him call out for his mom. I mean, that, that rocked me personally. And it was really hard for me to sit there and watch that without having emotions of anger, emotions of despair, emotions of helplessness. My dad worked at a place in central Michigan and it was, I won't say predominantly white, it was all white. There was a few times he'd go to lunch with his friends and he'd be in the backseat of the car and they would get pulled over. My dad being in the backseat would be the one who ended up in the backseat of the cop car. No real reason, no real rhyme outside of he's the only black person in the car. So, I grew up with racism. I've seen it. I've witnessed it and I've been the recipient of it. And I've shared my story about the Walmart parking lot. So, that wasn't police, but that was just citizens. And there's work to be done in America. Some people will take the challenge head-on, some won't. But we can't change everybody's mind on that. But it needs to be looked at seriously. It needs to be challenged and we need to do something about it as a community of Americans. I was talking with a friend who lives in Jacksonville. We've been friends for a long time. He told me some stories. He's from Bainbridge, Georgia, which is... He grew up there, which is probably about 40 minutes north of Tallahassee, Florida. He's a little bit older than me and just to give a setting, my ex-wife's from that spot too. She told me, and she's my age, when she graduated from high school, the community opened the pool up to black people. And when they opened the pool up, the white people built another pool and made that private. I'm 40... Something. And you put it in perspective like that, that's not long ago. I graduated in 1990. And she graduated in 1990. So that's not a long time ago. And there's work to be done, is what I'm saying. And so I talked to my buddy and we talked for a long time because in that setting in Bainbridge, Georgia, he got to see a lot of racism by the police that we didn't have phones to capture the videos or cameras or anything like that. And it just got to be a real intense conversation. And afterwards, he says, "With all of the protesting..." And I'm not even going to speak on the rioting because that's just asinine. That's absolutely stupid and that's... That's not people wanting to actually make a difference. But the people who are protesting, the people who are doing things to voice their concern or voice their support and wanting change, what do we do after that? What happens after the Fourth of July and all the protests are over? And my comment to him was, "Well, you need to go to your local city leaders. You need to talk to them. You need to go to your local police chief and you need to talk with them." Because when you talk about it and there's two-way communication and there's dialogue, real dialogue, things change. I don't really believe, in my opinion, that someone can force that. It's something that happens from within. If I'm having problems with my wife, I can't ask Ron to fix my marriage. I can't ask Keith to fix my marriage. I can't ask anybody else to fix my marriage. The only way I'm going to fix my marriage is by having two-way dialogue, communication with my wife. And not just that, but listening and being transparent and trusting and doing that day after day after day after day after day after day. Until our relationship is where we want it. And I look at the question he asked and it's, "That's what has to happen." There has to be people in the community who are not just willing to say, "I support" and "I want," but you have to have actions behind it. One of the things that I see a little bit differently than some people is, I understand some of the police, they have a job to do and they're doing their job. And then let, let me back up. So, as a black person, I've been categorized. I have been labeled. I have been put in clumps because of this black person did this. So now automatically I'm labeled as what that black person did. And we know that's not right. We know it's not true. And then also, I look at police as well. Because of what this police officer did, now all police are labeled that way. And that's not right. I believe that living here in west Michigan, I won't say just west Michigan, but living here in Holland is not normal. We live in a society in Holland which, hold on one second, I'm sorry. That is abnormal in my opinion. We have a group of police officers who I think are awesome. We have a community here that I believe is awesome. I've touted Holland for so long. I call this home now. I've been here for 24 years and I've traveled around from being in the military. I've traveled around from, for my work and I've got to go to different communities and Holland is the cream of the crop. There are not a lot of communities in the great United States of America that are like Holland. And as I was speaking about the Holland Police Department, I want to read a few things, so bear with me for a second. These are the core values of our Police Department. Dedication. Under dedication, it says enthusiasm, teamwork and commitment. Respect. Under respect, it says unity, trust and support. Integrity. Under integrity, it says honesty, dependability, accountability. Professionalism. Under professionalism, it says growth, quality and pride. Compassion. Under compassion, it says caring, community, customer service. Customer service got me because you don't think of that coming from a Police Department. You think of that coming from Sam's Club or Target. And then the one that sticks out the most to me is our purpose. And it says under our purpose, "The continuous pursuit of excellence." And if you're pursuing excellence, you're never sitting still. You're always propelling forward. And they do this with two-way communication. Some of the things that they do in this community, the Junior Police Academy, Citizens Police Academy, Police Reserve Team, and there's a list of stuff that our Police Department does. The chief of our Police Department is a phenomenal professional and at this time, I want to just say thank you for being a phenomenal professional. You guys go above and beyond and one of the things, not just go above and beyond, but they... The things that people in our country are wanting, the things that people in our country are lacking for and are in desperate need of with black men being killed is what has been practiced, preached and trained on in our community, day after day after day. And I look at Grand Rapids and 12 to 18 months, they had a, they had problems there. And for the last 12 to 18 months, they've addressed those problems. But those problems were addressed, like I said before, not by an outside source. Those problems were addressed inside their community. It was with the community and it was with the Police Department. And that is really, that is how as Americans doing that, we will help save black men from being killed by police officers. Demonstrating and showing support in a way that's civil and coming to the table afterwards and talking, and talking about the hard conversations, bringing those things up and pressing forward. Not everybody's going to agree on everything, but we have to have the conversations. We have to continue to move forward. Because we can't, we can't, we can't have all of these black men die for no reason. It really sucks as a black man to see it. So those are just some of my words and my feelings about this. So, I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Quincy. Other comments from council?
Thank you for sharing. That's very important for us to hear.
I think that all that really is left to do at this point, there's, there's nothing I think that can follow that, Quincy. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there support?
So.
Support moved by Trethuie, support by Peters. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.